Call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. Could you call the roll, please?
I will. Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Black is absent. Councilmember Derringer.
Here.
Council-- Mayor Pro Tem Piper.
Here.
And Mayor Mersch.
Here.
Have the pledge of allegiance. We have the pledge of allegiance. We have special guests tonight. We have two seniors from San Pedro High that are here for their government class. They're trying to see what a wonderful example of local government we have here in the city of Rolling Hills. We're going to have Melissa lead us in the pledge of allegiance, if you would, please.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Very nicely done.
Here we go again. Downtown for the LA City Council meeting.
We're more geographically desirable. Do I start this now, or do you do this? So this will be item four, the oath of office in the city council reorganization. And
we're going to start with the administration of oath to Mayor Pro Tem Piper and Councilmember Derringer, who were reappointed as a result of no one else running against them. So if you want to stand, and we'll do this. Okay. So if you'll both repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jeff Derringer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations for running unopposed and being willing to serve again. It's this one. Okay. It's a great gig. So at this time, the city council will now reorganize for the coming year. I'd like to move that Jeff Piper serve as mayor for the following year. Is there a second?
Second.
Except a second. Is there any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Sure. Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Derringer.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Piper.
Yes.
And Mayor Mersch.
Yes.
Okay, now that I'm mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that Bea Derringer is served as position of Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Any public comment? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Derringer.
Yes.
Mayor Piper.
Yes.
Councilmember Mersch.
Yes.
All right, so now now we're going to first, Leah has a stack from every city. This is the crazy part about whatever. They send stacks, so Rolling Hills Estates, California from Ben Allen.
Frank.
Just it just keeps going, all this loot, all the way down to the most important one, which is our little wood plaque from us. And all I would like to say is we've been doing this a long time. And Leah is always super prepared. She does a great job. She pays a lot of attention to a lot of detail that is very important to what we do. And we really appreciate everything you've done for the city. And thank you.
Thank you. It's my, it's my pleasure.
Yeah, Pat, fire up.
Mayor. I would also like to express my appreciation and gratitude for the heavy lifting that you had to deal with this year, especially the second half of the year with the, I don't know, little things like utility outages and stuff like that. But as Jeff said, you're always ultra-prepared. I worry about missing a sentence when I read through a staff report, thinking that you picked up on it and you're going to make me look bad because I didn't see it. But you do an incredibly good job, not only on city council, but with the staff, which you're much better at dealing with, but particularly the residents, the people that are our neighbors, that we run into all over the place, all the time. And your ability to bring cohesion and thoughtfulness from the residents, even when they disagree with each other, even when they disagree with you. That happens. That's life. But you've just done a remarkable job. Your second, your second time around, you did a great job your first time, too. And it's very much appreciated by me.
Thank you, Pat. I appreciate it.
And I would like to add and echo everything that was said by Mayor Piper and Councilmember Wilson, which I fully agree to and am in accord with. And so, but I would like to add, I just like the way you run meetings, that you are allowing people to articulate ideas so that we have a full discussion about the issues that we have and getting input from our residents. So everyone feels like they've been heard. And I think that's really important, and you do that so well. And you have a great way of trying to keep and looking and checking with everyone and making sure everyone feels included. And that's really important for the residents. All the stuff you do outside, I agree with Councilmember Wilson. There's been a lot of issues that have come up this year. And you've been there for all of them. And you've headed them off at the pass. And you knew everything about it and gave us the full report when we got here. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Bea. I appreciate it. So I wasn't going to say anything, but da-da, da-da. I did change my mind. It's been an honor to serve as your mayor during this past very challenging year. The challenges have had significant impact on the city and, and our residents. And that's resulted in several meetings where we had standing room only overflow out in the other areas. And that's pretty unusual for our little quiet city. So it was a challenge for everybody. I'd like to thank, I'm sorry, we only have one resident here tonight, but I'd like to thank everyone who took the time to attend those rather contentious and long meetings and all the other meetings that we had throughout the year, or to reach out to us by phone or email. Local government, and I'm not just saying this because we have students here, but local government works best when residents participate and share their thoughts with the council as we try to make the best decisions for the city. I also want to thank our small but mighty staff, who stepped up to take all the unprecedented issues and required extra hours. They did it all with teamwork, professionalism, and a smile. Lastly, I want to thank my fellow council members for their support and patience with me, especially when the meetings ran too long, and for always allowing respectful and considerate deliberation on each and every issue. The challenges we are facing will be with us for a while, and I'm sure new ones as well. And I look forward to continuing to work to serve the community in the next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take just a super brief moment because we have to rearrange the chairs. And then we'll You said you loved your chair. Well, guess what? Okay, you're live again at 7:12. Perfect. All right. All right, first, I'd like to rearrange the agenda. We're going to move 15B up to right after eight. Because that will get James out of here, Cal OES.
Not, not that we don't love you.
And, and then, and then what? Kathleen's here in the eights, right?
Yeah.
Kathleen is in Perfect. All right, then, does anyone have an issue with that?
No.
All right, so moved. All right, there's no blue items. There is
We have a quasi-blue item. It's kind of, it was not in the packet for
Do we need to approve the separate piece of paper?
No.
Okay, then we're good. All right, this is the moment where we, if there's any public comment on things that are not in the agenda. Very none. We'll close that. The consent calendar, which I like to do.
I just want to pull eight G because I have a question.
I'm sorry, Bea. Wait, what?
G is in George. Yeah.
I would move to approve all consent items except eight G.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, eight G.
Okay, I have a question for Ms. McGowan. If she could please assume the position.
That's where I am.
All right, so
I've got a fending item up, I hope.
It's just as to the attachment E, you know, because we've always been told that having this polluted canyon flow monitoring, monitoring table was eliminating us having to do more work for our stormwater management than if we didn't have it there. And my understanding was that we were, because of this monitoring, that we were not getting a flow. And we were able to show that our city was absorbing all the water and not sending it out to any tributaries that, that hitherto and on, that they're claiming we need to clean up. So in this chart, however, it doesn't, maybe I just don't understand what it means because I don't
I'd like to explain it if you'd like.
I would love it if you could explain it, yes.
There were two in the, there's one that's the attachment E is the corrected one from last year. There's, there's one for this year and then the corrected one from last year.
Oh, okay. So then, but
But they're similar in nature and the content. So I'm happy to explain what the colors mean and how
Yes. I mean, yeah, so I assume whether it applies to attachment D, because I had my question for all of them, but I thought that
D and E are very similar. E had to be corrected by the consult, the outside, the other consultant that does this flow monitoring. And so we felt, because it was submitted to the LA Water Board with last year's report, and we, there was a correction we needed to resubmit so they would have the corrected report. So which one would you like me to use as an example, E?
Um, we can, whatever you think is best. I'm fine.
E's fine. We can do that one. And we can go to the other one if you'd like. So E was for the, essentially the rain year that kind of runs similar to the fiscal year. Twenty, so from July 1, 2022 to June 30 of 2023. And obviously, most of the rain happens in the winter time, you know, late fall, early spring. So what the city has is what's called deemed compliance with the pollutant limits in the permit. If it can demonstrate that it's retaining within the city the runoff from a certain type of a rain event. Not all rain events, because, you know, some rain events are so huge, as we've seen in the last two years. It's an act of God, and you couldn't have even, whether you had, you know, hardened engineered designed infrastructure, or you have a natural system like you all have. You couldn't possibly retain in your city all the water that fell in these last couple of years. But the designs, the storm that, the critical storm that you have to show you can retain is what's known as the 85th percentile 24-hour rain event. Which means it's the storm that it's, 85% of the storms are less than that for a 24-hour period. And the rainfall depth of that storm statistically here in Rolling Hills Estates is about one inch. Okay. Did that make sense?
Wrong city.
Rolling Hills.
Strong city?
Wrong city.
I'm sorry, Rolling Hills. Sorry. And I almost never make that mistake. And I'm very sorry. Because I consult for both. I am very sorry. I know the difference. And no one else on the, no other cities on the peninsula have been able to do that with the natural system. But it's a combination of your natural canyons and the low intensity of development in the city that, you know, large lots with, or a number of housing per area, less impervious area. So the chart shows the dates of the rain on the left. Or, and then the next column is what is the 24-hour rainfall that happened for that day?
Is that the event flow volume?
Well, we, we, hydrologically, we typically say an event is starts with, when the rain starts, once you have a tenth of an inch until it ends, however many days that is. But for the 85th percentile, you're counting how much rain fell in 24 hours. So the first one you see is January 1, 2023, where there was 1.02 inches of rain. So that meets the criteria of a 24-hour storm that was equal to or greater than the 85th percentile. And so there was, because it was greater than that 85th percentile, then you, it was no harm, no foul. There was a teeny bit of flow. It was not very much that day. But then, two days later, you had a much larger storm of 1.85 inches. So that's, that's almost like a 90th percentile storm event, meaning it's 90% of storms are smaller than that storm. And then we had some more flow. So these are showing, but you see prior to that, there were rainfall events that were .59 inches and .54 inches, and there was no flow. And so the other thing is that once you have a storm that's greater than the 85th percentile, what we've been doing in this chart is saying, once you have one that's bigger than that, so it doesn't officially count, you get three days of flow after that that's okay, no harm, no foul. If it's still flowing after the, on the fourth day, then you've, then we are concerned that there's flow that's not just limited to caused by that rain event. The red ones you see are showing. And this is the kind of McGowan Consulting didn't dictate this. This was the consulting firm with the hydrologist that did this. But we, we talked to them about it and collaborated on the way they presented this. So if you see in the bottom, the interpretive colors, it shows you that anything that's colored in yellow is a rainfall event that was greater than or equal to one inch of rain, which is the 85th percentile event. And then anything that was green was flow that they attributed to that rainfall event being greater than the 85th percentile. And then if you had flow in red, they said, oh, well, this is flow associated with a rainfall event that was less than an 85th percentile rain event. The thing is that these flows occurred when we had had a, you know, much more than a typical annual rainfall. The first couple of years that we did this monitoring, the first year, we had no flow whatsoever. But it was a pretty dry year. We did have 85th percentile events, but there just wasn't flow. And the challenge is here is that this is a natural system. And nature doesn't always fit within this nice little, you know, box. And so by the time, in particular, if you look at this year's rainfall, which is the attachment D right before it, you see we, we were in the green for all the way until February, mid-February. And then, you know, the system was just saturated. And you have groundwater coming up into that canyon at that point. You know, it's not just rainfall causing it. So we don't really know what the Water Board's going to say about this, but we're presenting it kind of very basically, not discussing it a lot, because the consultant, after this third year of their contract amendment, is going to write you a, is going to write a technical memorandum that's really going to drill down into this and analyze it. And so we would expect to submit that at the end of this, the current reporting year we're in, the one that'll, and ask them to deliver us a report next summer that looks at the last three rain years. And so, plus, we could also ask them to look at the prior before that, because we had the two previous years. We started doing this back in, I believe, 20 2020, 21, and 21, 22. Those were the first two years we did that. Does that make sense? So we'll see what happens.
Essentially, I mean, this is going to be something, when they look at it in perspective, they're going to see that we're still doing, retaining most of the water. And it's not really something that indicates that, that they need to include us into the more heavy-duty monitoring.
Well, I don't know what they're going to say. They've been, the Water Board staff have been very difficult lately, as you are aware. They've been interpreting their permit very precisely, very, they're mincing where every word they literally interpret. Going to make, if they, I don't know what they're going to do. I don't even know if they read these reports. Sometimes it takes them a couple of years before they even look at it. But to give you an example, if you look at the beginning of the 23, 24 year, remember the hurricane that hit us in August? That weird freaky hurricane? You all had almost, you had three inches of rain in two days from that hurricane, and there was no flow in that canyon. It, that, you know, your natural systems can retain a lot when, when they're not already saturated after, you know, many, many, lots of rainfall. And I think the other thing we said in the report was, and I'm not sure if we pulled it back, because we didn't want to, McGowan Consulting didn't want to overinterpret and get ahead of the hydrologists, their technical memo. But we did look at like how much rain had fallen for the year before we hit the red the first time. And I think we, it was beyond the average annual rainfall, the point at which we started seeing flow that was more than, than you, in theory, if you were using a, you know, a really clear-cut analysis there. So these are, the other thing we could say to the Water Board is that these last two years of rainfall have been greater, more rain than the 90th percentile rain year. So the whole year. So there's a lot, you know, this is a natural system. And I would argue that you're going to see this. But if you look at one or two storms isolated, you know, you're going to see that it does what any kind of infrastructure would do and does retain that design storm.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. Makes it much more understandable. Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Open for public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we close public comment. What would you guys like to do?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so then we're going to go to 15B. Receive and file a verbal update of the FEMA Grant Program administered by Cal Foreignia Government Offices Emergency Services.
Good evening, Mayor Piper and members of city council. It's a little different. I'll get you through it. I will be presenting this item this evening, but I also have with us Brandy Villanueva. Brandy is our Area G Disaster Management Area Coordinator. She'll be sitting up here and will be also available to answer questions. I know some of it was related to questions that relate to declaring local disaster. And she can answer those questions and also as it relates to this. So I will go in, I will kick it off. Just kind of a brief overview of what we discussed this evening.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Have a great
I'll provide an overview of our RPV program and the disaster mitigation assistance programs. And also, we'll be seeking direction from the city council to staff, which includes the following, and that is authorize staff to arrange a meeting with Cal OES for a site visit to the city of Rolling Hills and attend a future city council meeting. And direct staff to begin coordinating with Cal OES specifically to apply for available grant programs and return to the city council with updates and required approvals. So a little bit about our RPV's program. So this past October, 2024, RPV launched a 42 million voluntary buyout program. Voluntary. It is, this initiative in partnership with FEMA and Cal OES is funded through FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Also the acronym for HMGP. It's designed for property owners in the greater Portuguese Bend landslide area whose homes have been damaged or at risk. It offers pre-disaster fair market value appraisals as of December 2022 that becomes eligible to homeowners. It also helps, it helps out affected homeowners to relocate to safer areas. It also further allows them to convert the acquired properties into permanently protected open space. And it enhances resilience by preventing redevelopment and reducing future risks in doing so. A couple of things about the program. There are some minimum eligibility criteria that must be vetted. First, it can't be banked on. This excludes properties owned by banks or financial institutions through foreclosure. If there are mortgages or liens held against the property, the fair market value paid to the property owner will be decreased by this amount. In other words, all mortgage obligations or property liens will be exhausted first. Also, no sale after December 1, 2022. The property must not have been sold, and it will be verified by election, tax, and parcel records. Legally permitted structures, they must have approved permits on file with the city, all structures on that property. Legal ownership. Applicants must be listed as owners per the assessors and building division records. Now, there are, RPV has established a prioritization for escrow, and they ranked it as follows. First, the property has to be a red-tagged structure. That's the highest priority. Yellow-tagged structures are secondary. Imminent-risk properties. These are properties that are close to the land movement and have features such as fissures, sinkholes. They also have de-energized properties. These are properties that are indefinitely without utilities. Properties also that are within the landslide and winterization benefit. These are properties that may benefit the city's current landslide stabilization and winterization efforts. And have preserve value, meaning that properties the remaining twenty-five percent contribution for their property through an additional reduction of their fair market value payment. And this is typically done when it's towards the end of the of the closing. So a quick highlight, FEMA has your mitigation assistance programs. FEMA offers various grant programs under the H M A umbrella. You have the pre-disaster mitigation, and we'll get into depth of all of these, but it's focused on proactive disaster risk reduction. Flood mitigation assistance, F M A, aims to reduce flood damage. We have the building resilient infrastructure and communities, also known as a brick grant, focuses on resilience building projects and the hazard mitigation grant program, which we're discussing this evening, which provides funding for after federally declared disasters. So a quick overview of the hazard mitigation grant program, the H M G P, funding is activated following a presidential disaster declaration for events like wildfires, floods, earthquakes or hurricanes. FEMA then channels this funding to state emergency management agencies such as Cal O E S, which then distributed to the state, tribal, local governments, nonprofits and special districts. Essentially, the overall goal for this is to implement long-term mitigation strategies to reduce future disaster risks. Last meeting, we kind of highlighted a little bit what you want to hear back, there's additional information about funding allocation. So H M G P funding is based on a percentage of the total federal disaster assistance provided, meaning the larger the disaster yield greater funds. Some of these projects include property buyouts, which is currently being discussed with R P V and implemented, infrastructure upgrades, wildfire mitigation and community resilient Every application must meet the FEMA guidelines to be technically, that are technically feasible, cost effective, and they are required to pass the environmental and historic preservation E H P review. So there is an application process and timeline. This is quite essential and critical. So Cal O E S has twelve months with some extensions allowed to identify interested communities and then identify and scope what the eligible projects could potentially be and then complete sub-applications for FEMA, which their region nine, which is currently located in California, Oakland, California reviews these applications. FEMA then provides funding and estimates a thirty-day, six-month and twelve-month intervals based on a twenty percent of public assistance, P A, and individual assistance reimbursements. Now, what's important to also highlight is that there has been some recent H M G P activity in California, which has opened up these funding options. In twenty twenty-three, there were disaster declarations for the severe atmospheric rivers, which occurred January through March. Then we had Hurricane Hillary in July. In twenty twenty-four, the disaster declarations included the Southern California storms and flooding, which was January, March. Now, as you, as you notice, I highlighted an abstract of twenty twenty-three disaster declarations. The funds from the severe atmospheric rivers that became available at that time, applicants ended up withdrawing their applications. Because of those applicants withdrawing from, from that process, it allowed R P V to secure that left over funding. So how does that fit for the city of Rolling Hills? Well, there's a challenge. Right now, the city of Rolling Hills is not eligible for the current H M G P funding because the period for these applications and the applications themselves have exceeded the available funds. However, there is a possibility, a potential opportunity, that there are future federally disaster declarations and these include the wildfires of twenty twenty-four. As you recall, we had the Borrell and the Park fires. Now, those could potentially lead to a presidential disaster declaration that as a city may qualify for funding. And these are two snippets because in September of twenty, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, Governor Newsom requested that the president consider these and declare these presidential federal declarations. To date, from my understanding, there has not been for these two fires. Now, as H M G P provides vital resources for mitigation, future risk, mitigating future risks, staff is going to continue to monitor these opportunities for new disaster declarations and its four pathways for Rolling Hills to access this funding. We're going to continue to provide updates to the city council in a city council format, allowing residents to listen in and participate and engage in the conversation. And we have to always keep in mind that whatever grant that we potentially apply for, that requirement of that seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent match is going to be required. So this evening, this is just a brief highlight, I know staff provided via email, the staff report, which was uploaded to the city website and made available. So there's additional information that you may find in there, but I just provided a high level picture of what was currently in discussions with Cal O E S. This evening, we are asking the city council direct staff to authorize us to work and arrange a meeting with Cal O E S for a site visit to the city of Rolling Hills and attend a future city council meeting. This will allow them to come and see firsthand our city and identify how we closely relate or may not necessarily relate to the city of Rancho Paulus Verde. But also they will work closely with staff with coordinating, specifically looking at applications that we may be eligible for. So it's going to require us to really peel the onion and looking to see what the city of Rolling Hills could be eligible to apply for. And we'll come back to city council once we have that information and we'll seek direction at that time if the council chooses to proceed with one or a handful of grants. Mayor Piper, this concludes my presentation and I have Brandy here as well for questions. And that, that's it.
Any questions?
If I'm understanding you properly, the, we, we might not set it up this way because if we were ever eligible, we wouldn't necessarily be using the same criteria and things.
The men.
The individual city gets to, to do that. But in their seventy-five, twenty-five, the city isn't actually funding the twenty-five percent, are they? The resident is by taking the twenty-five percent off the.
The market value.
The price, the price of.
That's correct.
Of the property.
Yes. So that amount will be reduced from the payment at closing and will be held in escrow to cover the balance of the remaining activities. So that could include the demolition and the restoration of the property, but that is being imposed upon to the resident, not from the city.
And as far as maintenance, once the resident sells the property, so it remains, you know, unbuildable and it stays as open space and the maintenance on those properties, that is, goes to the city, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And at that time, the city can collaborate with a nonprofit organization that is willing to take on the responsibility for maintaining that preserve area. The city can also apply for mitigation grants that can authorize maybe hiring goats to feed off of the property to maintain it. But yes, ultimately, the city is going to be held responsible for the property that they just recently acquired.
So the city is the, is the title.
That's correct.
Becomes the title on it. Okay, thank you.
Jeff, I'm sorry, I did have a question. Can you go back one or two slides? Okay. The first one, challenging eligible for current H M G P as applications have exceeded available funds, is that the forty-two million dollars for R P V?
So right now, based on the federally disasters that have been declared, we are not eligible. All that funding exhausted.
Are you talking about?
This is the, the atmospheric rivers and let me go back to it. Sorry.
Because we just piggyback on them, right?
Yeah, you can go ahead and ask a question.
Excuse me. So with each federally declared disaster comes hazard mitigation fund. So they essentially send two pots of money out for jurisdictions to participate. The impacted jurisdictions can apply for the public assistance and the individual assistance, while anybody can apply for that H M P G, the hazard mitigation fund amount of money, whatever the pot may be. So that, that H M P G grant amount varies based on the amount of disaster that is declared by the federal government. And so each federally declared disaster has its own pot of H M P G grants, funding that's available to them. So it's not a, we will always get, you know, four hundred million dollars as H M P G grant. It just depends on how much damage was done and what caused that federally declared disaster. So you guys don't actually have to be impacted by the next atmospheric river. I anticipate that there will probably be a request here soon for the mountain fire in Ventura County. That'll be asking the, you know, governor to declare emergency, actually, he's already done that, but to actually ask the president for that. So that pot of money could be coming as well.
That goes on to my next question. If you go back to that, that.
This one here.
No, the one that I asked you to go back to.
Sorry.
Yeah, that one. Okay, so I'm really confused here because the twenty twenty-four Borrell and Park fires, are you saying that a resident here could apply for funding based on those disasters which didn't have any impact here?
Not the residents, but you as the city could apply for the hazard mitigation grant funds, even if you were not impacted by those two fires, yes. It's a different pot of funds that come available. So it, it opens it up and then they take, they'll take the review people, the team from Cal O E S and FEMA will actually review all of the applications that submitted and try and figure out, one, are they cost benefit analysis or they're going to, you know, benefit how, how much? They may put you in a queue and if there's anything, because people do return the H M P G funds because they can't do the project or they changed the scope of the project so they need less funding, so the money goes back and if you're on, in that queue, then you maybe call them and said, okay, yes, you can actually move forward with your project.
So the city applies based on those disasters on behalf of the residents? I mean, I, I just don't understand how that money gets funneled to a resident that's experiencing landslide related damage.
So the city would apply and the city itself would build the buyout program with Cal O E S officials. And then from there, based on your direction, the city would then manage the program, then to ask the residents who want to apply, you know, if they choose to be a voluntary buyout person, they want to actually go through the process, then the resident could do that. So essentially, the city becomes that intermediary and helping to channel the funds from the state down to the resident. So you guys would build the program in-house, working with state officials as to what your eligibility criteria were. You build the application, you work with the team to get the appraisers, to have your inspectors go out and inspect the properties, red tag them, yellow tag them, imminent danger, you know, those types of things. And so really, the city becomes that, that focal point in working with the residents. The residents submit their applications and then you guys do the rest of the work with.
What if the damage to the home, I assume we're only talking about improvements, not a fault, not a fault line, but a, this is.
Fisher.
Yeah, fissure. This only applies to improvements. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
No, so this program actually, if, if you were to move forward with doing a buyout program, the, essentially the homeowner, if they apply, they no longer stay at that home.
No, I understand that. Okay, so there's been some damage to homes in Rolling Hills. I don't know the extent certainly of every individual home, but I don't think anything's been yellow tagged, certainly nothing's been red tagged. So the homes in, in our city, while sustaining some damage, and I don't know the extent of it, it's not to the degree or the magnitude that the R P V homes, which are collapsing upon themselves.
That's correct. And that's why when I, I mentioned, it's not a one size fits all. Whatever program the city of Rolling Hills builds, it's going to be based on our program. So what's unique about R P V is that they have this hierarchical structure, right? You go from red, yellow, but if you look back, they also have on that list, again, not a guarantee, it's going to be based on how we work closely with Cal O E S, they have the energized properties. That is, that is their fourth on their list. So you have red tag, yellow tag, imminent risk properties, and then they have the energized properties.
I'm not opposed to exploring this at all, but I'm just thinking in an economic sense, if a home's worth two million dollars and it suffered de-energization, if that's a word, it probably cost about a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollars to restore utility, utilities back to the house. But if this program only pays seventy-five percent, that means a two million dollar home is only, the homeowner's only going to get a million and a half for it while having suffered only a hundred fifty thousand dollars in damage.
But also minus a twenty-five percent.
Right.
If the city decides to impose that on the city.
But the twenty-five, seventy-five is fixed, so that's, that's real, right? That's not going to change.
That's correct. So there's a lot of questions that still need to be asked. That's why I can only utilize R P V's program as an example and it's very unique in nature where they are literally kind of writing the script on how this works based on the land movement circumstances, but also the utility shut offs. So when they initially started, I can probably count on one hand how many, I think they had two, let's thank you, two registered red tag homes.
I think it's.
Since then, I think we're at twenty.
Yeah, that exceeds the forty-two million.
So now you're looking at that prioritization for escrow. So now, if your home is neither one of the top three and you're on that fourth on that list, you are not eligible at this time. So when the next federally disaster is declared for the fires that didn't happen here, but up north, then this funding becomes available based on what is eligible, money is made available. Then this other group that maybe didn't make the red tag or now will be on the, maybe they could be, and then it just kind of goes on. But now they're competing with other agencies or programs and we could potentially, based on, we may or may not, I can't make a guarantee that we're going to be a part of this program. It, it might just be that we might be eligible for other programs before we get to this, but R P V and among other applicants are going to be competing for this future if it declared disasters.
Follow up on that. So I understand that how, if we were to get funds, we would set up our own criteria. I, I get that. But it seems to me that there would have to be some level of damage or disaster or something that would qualify for FEMA to recognize, you know, before, before the money got to us, for us to make the rules, do you think that if you're not, if we're not talking about red and yellow tag and things like that, if, you know, there's a fissure, you know, across your driveway, there's a fissure, your, your pool is cracked, your whatever, is that the type of thing that in your experience would rise to the level that FEMA would say that's, that's a disaster?
So you're actually, this pot of money is not a, when it comes from us as a disaster, the criteria is not that you have to be impacted. You're applying for a grant, right? So you don't have to proclaim a disaster here at the city. You, you're applying for a grant just like you apply for any other grant. If you want to buy generators, if you wanted or needed to do other infrastructure retrofit, city hall, it's the same process for this grant program because it's hazard mitigation. You're not actually applying because of disaster, you're trying to mitigate future disasters. So the idea with this grant funds is that the program you build is mitigating future damage and future impacts on your community. if, you know, there's a fissure, you know, across your driveway, there's a fissure, your, your pool is cracked, your whatever. Is that the type of thing that in your experience would rise to the level that FEMA would say that's, that's a disaster?
So you're actually, this pot of money is not a, when it comes from us as a disaster, the criteria is not that you have to be impacted. You're applying for a grant, right? So you don't have to proclaim a disaster here at the city. You, you're applying for a grant just like you apply for any other grant. If you wanna buy generators, if you wanted, uh, or needed to do other infrastructure retrofit, uh, city hall. It's the same process for this grant program because it's hazard mitigation. You're not actually applying because of disaster. You're trying to mitigate future disasters. So the idea with this grant funds is that the program you build is mitigating future damage and future impacts on your community. So you're building this buyout program for those properties, for instance, in Rancho Palos Verdes, those properties are gonna be turned into open space, right? Preventing future development, you know, a secondary or, you know, third round of impacts to those residents. So this, this pot of funding, when you're going through the HMPG grant program, you're applying for grant funds. It's not directly tied to an emergency or declared disaster for your particular city.
So to actually specify that because I have a fissure that runs down my street and it may potentially be running through my garage and has been impacting my pool and now my pool is draining into the soil as a result of a potential land movement. Or I happen to be in an area where my property was de-energized. So for us to, to specifically state, okay, so I have these fissures. We have to be able to still demonstrate that we have an imminent risk to our residents and public safety. How would we be able to determine that? Well, many different ways, right? We either work with the residents. Some residents have hired their own geologists and they have that. We can work closely with the community association to say, you know what? This location, this street is suffering a significant amount of impact as a result of land movement. And it's moving this percentage from the last however time, right? And if that deems that, uh, based on the application and we kind of, there's a lot of these little nuances and I'm not highlighting because I don't know the details in particular based on our program doesn't exist yet, but you have to be able to demonstrate that there's an imminent risk. And if your property may have fissures running through it, until you volunteer your property to go in that property and have a, a building official to look at it and also a geologist, geologist to deem it an imminent risk, then it only then potentially this could be an opportunity for that, for your agency. But that's not the only one. If you look at this list, it also could include de-energized properties. Well, what does that mean? So that I think is a part that, um, you know, I think it's gonna require a little more digging to determine if it ever gets to that point of de-energized properties because I don't know our properties in our city. I don't know how many are structurally impacted or if they're structurally sound to continue to live in. But to fully understand what de-energized properties is, I think that's something that we could potentially consider and then develop what that means, define it. And RPV is unique. This is a program that did not exist in this fashion and it was created for them. I hope that answers your question, Mayor. I mean, uh, sorry, Councilmember Marsh. Sorry.
Um, then we're gonna open a public hearing. Anyone wanna comment?
Hi, everyone. Uh, you all know me. Hello. And thank you for managing the, the meeting so civilly and, uh, with efficiency. I appreciate all of that. So, uh, some of this is gonna be repeated, uh, because Councilmember Wilson wasn't here before. I'll give a very truncated version of what I said last time, which is on a personal level, the last thing I wanna do is declare a natural disaster in the city and hurt values further because it was the, really the utilities that caused this harm. However, there are people that are really suffering and I hate to admit, we are one of them. Um, we have our house. We've thought of it as our forever home, uh, and we have a mortgage that runs for twenty-eight more years. We are upside down in value. We had to move our location in with the, uh, the grandparents. We have to pay a couple mortgages now. And now I can't do anything with the property. It just sits there. Uh, thank you for the council for giving me guidance last time about the, um, glacial speed of government. So I need to decide, are we getting a renter in there? Am I putting money into it to fix it up? Hundreds of thousands of dollars to get it rentable? Or am I gonna let it sit and see what happens with a potentially a buyback program? So we moved forward, we fixed our roof, we're spending, it's probably gonna be a couple hundred, three hundred, two, three hundred thousand dollars to fix it, to get it habitable. And when I mean habitable, you can't live there without power. You can't, uh, we might get by as our family, but I can't rent it to somebody without that. And so we are stuck. Insurance doesn't cover this. Even if you have landslide insurance, it might not even cover it, as I understand. Uh, we don't have any of that. Uh, there has been a lot of damage. It's not just to the structure, it's to the, the value of the land. Who wants to buy a place like that? I'm sure the value took a tremendous hit. Um, especially when you have above ground piping on the street to remind you every time you get out of your driveway that there's a problem with the land. And so it's, it's a real problem and our only way out that I see is a buyback program. Last thing I wanna do is give up twenty-five percent of the value. But if we're upside down and paying the mortgage and the rent coming in and all the potential fixes in the future with the breaks to the pipes, because if they're above grounding on the street, we're not above grounding on the rest of our property, we can't afford to do that, what's gonna happen? And so it would be a tremendous opportunity for us to just, you know, stop the bleeding. And so I really would ask the council to, to consider this and I know that it's unusual, but hearing it, uh, it sounds like if there's a disaster, we don't have to declare a disaster for the city. We get leftover funds and it's property by property specific. And some of our properties like ours are adjacent to the nature preserve. Maybe they expand their nature preserve. I don't know. But there's a lot of potential here. We know that de-energized properties qualifies or they wouldn't have approved the program. And in our city, we don't really have red tagged or yellow tagged homes. And so if there's any money available, maybe it would help people out who are really hurting. Um, or spending all this money, throwing good money after a bad property and there goes their life savings. So it would be very, very helpful. How do we live in another place? So we still think of this place as our home. I love it. It's sad when I come back every time and get the mail. But we are going forward to fix it up and get a renter in there. And maybe after five years, I did the math, we'll break even on the money we're putting into the property just to keep it going. And I have to do that because I have a loan and I have to keep it up. So we're stuck. And this is, as I see it, the only way out and, um, the other roads are, I'm not part of the private closed sessions, but they seem, it seems like tough, tough roads and what ifs and this would be a real opportunity. And if we have thirty-seven red tagged home, I mean, excuse me, de-energized homes in some form, one or the other, uh, you gotta do, I guess, doing the math, only a small percentage will apply and wanna do it. Many people just wanna stay. And only those who really need the funds would be applying for it or have a real need. So that's what I would like to, uh, offer. And I, I would like to know as soon, as quickly as we can, and if we did have a program, it'd be nice to be able to get some of that value back of the money we're putting into the house to keep it going. I know we consider our own criterion, but, um, if we're, they value it as of twenty twenty, December twenty twenty-two. Cause if you value what the property as of it is today, I'm sure it's a lot lower. I've already had lots of calls from, I don't wanna call them opportunists who wanna buy pennies on the dollar. Um, it's a beautiful home. It is home. It's not just a property, but, so that's how it's difficult. So thank you for listening to me.
All right, uh, any other public comments? Then I'd like to close the public part. Does anyone, I mean, from my standpoint, the two things is, one, we don't have any idea what the heck we're doing here, is I totally get, as in, we don't know how we can get it. We have to wait for another disaster and then we gotta wait for them to be leftover money and then we're against six other cities and how we're gonna apply. Is I think we need to understand it better to see what that opportunity is. At the same time, we have to be realistic. If this is gonna be, if we're, if it's never gonna happen, like maybe if you come down and get a tour and you see it and you're like, this is never gonna happen, then please tell us, cause we don't wanna waste our resources chasing this when maybe there's some other thing we can do that would be different. Like, as you said, maybe we get a grant that pays part of the generators or something like that, some, a different approach. That's kinda my view point. But I don't wanna get too deep in and spend too much time and our money and energy getting there if there's not a potential for it to happen. And I know the potential is small because other cities are gonna have better stories as of this moment.
How did, um, how did the, how did RPV go through this process? I mean, was this well planned and thought out or did it just get dumped in their lap? Uh, it's, it just seemed to have come out of nowhere, you know, from my perspective, because I don't have any, you know, knowledge of the city.
Sure. So, um, RPV has been applying to several programs. If you recall, they applied for the Brink, the BRIC program. And they were able to secure, I don't remember the dollar amount, maybe thirty, thirty, yeah. So they applied for, um, the BRIC program, the Building, Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities. So they already had this data to demonstrate, we have significant movement in the Portuguese Bank landslide area. It exists. So what the BRIC program did, it allowed them to secure this funding to mitigate movement, to really build the infrastructure to not, not gonna stop it, but to slow it down. So they had all years worth of data to demonstrate that.
But this is, I remember where they got, I think, over sixty million?
Yeah, it, yeah, it was, I can't remember the exact.
But did they have received it or very much of it or?
Yeah. Then they also applied for, um, other hazard mitigation grant programs that were in the queue. So they've been dat- they've been gathering data, which is what we don't have that like, right? We don't have years worth of data to demonstrate that we have such significant movement that is clear that we have imminent risk to public safety and to residents. So what they allowed them to do is to cap, to really maximize this funding because they already had it readily available and they were applying. They had already submitted the, the applications. They had programs. They, they had a project. That's how they, but this is, this is years and, and months of, of applying. We're not there. I mean, we've applied to grants. You know, Christian has a handful that he's been working on. We've done it through hazard mitigation, which is trimming the vegetation. So we've applied, but not related to land movement. It's helping reduce fire risks. So I don't know if you wanna add to that or if that answers your question, but they were in a, they were well positioned. But, um, I will tell you, in speaking with Cal OES, they were really astonished that residents were able to gather all the materials required, needed to submit their application within a, I think it was a two week period, maybe three weeks from the day that they announced it. I think it was like the first week of November they had to submit. They were so quick on getting that information and, and submitted that it, it just moved things rather quickly because they have to expense this money, but there's a deadline to have this money and funding dispersed. So I don't know if you wanna add to that or if I, you know, if they didn't include more information.
Well, in addition to the hazard mitigation funds you get from low presidentially declared disasters, the program is an annual program. Um, the timeline takes a little bit longer than, um, you know, we would like it to. So they, I'm sure they've already had working relationships. They do have grants with Cal OES already, uh, for mitigation purposes. But they have, because they have a, a declared disaster in their communities, um, they've had to do damage estimates. They've been submitting those. So they've been talking to Cal OES, um, and I'm sure in a lot of their conversations, they've probably, um, I know their city manager's been asking for funding in any place that he could find it. Um, and so I'm sure that in those conversations, as they've been going through this process, especially with the de-energization, uh, it came available pretty quickly because they are at, uh, towards the end of their grant cycle. So they do have to spend the funds because just like if a city has to give back their grant funds, if the state doesn't expend it, they gotta give it back to FEMA, right? And we don't want money to go back to FEMA if we have projects that we can work through and we can get accomplished. Um, so I think, uh, you know, having a, a further conversation with Cal OES on their process um, and the information they would need will probably set up the city really well for this next round of potential funding. Um.
So is that the direction to staff the?
Yes. And I will tell Cal OES, inform me that Cal OES, their director and I believe their assistant director, a handful of director level, executive levels came down to visit RPV and they met with elected officials and staff. But prior to that, they were closely working with staff anyway on this, on these grants. So, um, I'm seeking direction from the council to authorize me to work with Cal OES to get one of the directors or executive team members to visit our city. I don't think you know until you actually walk and visit behind the gates to fully understand and get a clear picture of what that might look like. And I might ask for permission from the handful of residents who are following the voluntary buyout program to allow us to maybe visit. Um, I know it's a huge ask, but you can only see what's on the street. I, I don't know beyond that unless you get permission. So that's my direction this evening, council, is to see if you give me authorization to col- you know, collaborate with Cal OES, to have them come out here. And when they come out here, do an assessment, but also provide a presentation before the city council. They're not gonna give you a full analysis on that same day because they're coming from up north. So they'll probably do a visit, maybe explain specifics about programming like, like this, much, at a much granular level. Um, and then they can go back and really work with us closely to see, okay, based on what I saw and what I, I understand, the city needs to do this list of stuff, right?
What's the downside of, of doing this?
We spend hours and hours and days and days of staff time and they get there and say, that, that cracks, that's not big enough. What are you guys doing? And we have to go for the pool of money that's there that's being used and it's sort of the use it or lose it approach of, I mean, that's really what's happening here is we're gonna throw our name in, they're gonna say, this came for this and we didn't use it all, so now we're gonna hand it out to other people based upon needs, based upon whatever those things are gonna be. There's, they're gonna have their own criteria. So, I mean, that's part of it to me is, the value to me is figuring out is, what is the criteria? Cause if the criteria is red tagged or whatever that would be, then we should just know that and then we can put a stop to that. If it is, hey, there's potential for this and this, then we can discuss whether there's, it's worth the energy to keep going. Cause that, that's my concern is, if we're against the houses and I, and I know Jay has a problem, but, uh, get down at the bottom, when you're standing next to the house that's completely caved in and upside down and whatever versus we don't have power is a huge difference in my mind and where the, how their department's gonna have to judge that. So I think what we're saying is, we need to learn more about what their procedures are and how that looks like. And have ideally, if you guys are willing to come down, go look and you guys say, oh, totally, we can make something happen. Maybe if there's money, maybe, maybe, or this is never gonna happen. I mean, that's.
But we're not gonna know that unless we take the initial step that we're talking about.
Yeah, just, we're gonna talk more. But I don't want, yeah, I don't think we're filling out tons of grant forms and spending thousands and thousands of dollars to do this. It's more time and their time of just eyeballing and see if there's any sensibility to this.
And the second, I, I apologize. I know that you're not asking any questions. Go ahead.
No, I, I was just gonna say that I think one of the reasons that RPV was able to be successful in this, besides that they were in ongoing conversations, is they had a lot of data to be able to supply. And that's where the residents are getting their data in a lot of cases. They're getting it from what RP, the readings that RPV's been, been doing. So they've had the dialogue, they've got the data, they were able to provide the data. They were ready to move quickly when the opportunity became available. If we, and we didn't even start, we didn't even start noticing anything until that, in, I think what, June? When it got a little weird down there at Ranch, at Ranchero, I think it was in June when it took its first kinda move.
Well, that, that's been going on for decades. I thought it was.
No, I know, you know, it's been going on for a long time, but I mean, the more, this more significant. And the cracks across Cinch Ring and Quail Ridge, that was.
Yes, that was, that was a summer. Yeah, summer of twenty twenty-four.
So we don't have data to, you know, to go back. But if we don't even start to start getting things in line, if something were to become available, we won't be able to move fast enough.
Well, and I think that's where the question is, is what do we need and what does that need to look like?
Right, right.
So if, there's a lot of ifs here. The, for better, for worse, our advantages were small. So we're nickels and dimes to their budget and maybe they'll say, hey, here's this little pool we got left at the bottom. It's too small for any of these big cities to use it because the paperwork's gonna kill them, but maybe it's worthwhile for us because it's big enough. And, but I think that's really where the question is, is, is the criteria and do we even have a shot that makes any sense? Cause if the answer is no, then let's move on and find the next potential. Or if this doesn't make sense, but that does guide us somewhere, cause we're little. We, I mean, there's three more people that work here, right? And that's all of us. Right, so.
Yeah, um, there was a question I developed when, when Ms. Villanueva was talking about, this is not just a program for a federally declared emergency, that there's regular monies devoted each year to the hazard mitigation grant program. Is that correct? So what is the funding? So what is the funding for that and how is that dispersed apart from the federal declaration monies?
So it's, it's the same process as with the federal declaration process. Um, it just, with the annual grant, it just takes longer. So it's an eighteen month timeline from when this application is submitted to when it generally is reviewed and approved by, by Cal O E S typically for the general fund of money that comes through. The, the emergency declaration funds, those move faster sometimes?
How much faster?
I don't know that exact answer. I don't work for Cal O E S, so I don't know how quickly they turn those around. But generally, they do tend to work much faster than, because it's coming as a federal declaration versus our, the annual grant program. But that's a question you can ask.
In the presentation I saw with R P V, I thought they said it would take up to a year to close escrow? Does that sound right?
I'm not sure.
This is when, um, Ara did the town hall. And um, there, they, there was a, a, a process timeline associated with it. But I, I, I thought it's somewhere, it said it would take, it could take up to a year uh, to fund or to close escrow on the, the homes. So you're talking about eighteen months is, you know, on one hand, twelve months on another hand, even if it's only six or eight months, I, I guess that's not horrible.
A, once a homeowner accepts a buyout offer, the average closing takes about forty-five days. The city will conduct the purchase and then title transfer.
I'm sorry, could you read that again, please, I'm sorry?
It just says here, property transition, and this is actually found on their website, I just pulled it up really quickly. Um, upon closing escrow, all?
Okay, that's.
On closing escrow?
Sorry, wrong one, sorry. Once a homeowner accepts a buyout offer, the average closing takes forty-five days.
So there is some time, so once, so the city has submitted the application, they're, the city application with, these are all the homes that we are pushing through in this first round of requests. Now it's going to the state and the state will start doing the benefit cost analysis for those properties and the buyout component. And then from there, then they'll send the package to FEMA for approval. And when it comes back, then they can move forward to the next.
So it's not gonna happen in forty-five days?
No, no, it's after it comes back.
That's just the escrow, yeah. I, I can't find the exact timeframe.
Do you, do you know what you're doing going forward? Do you know what we're talking about? As in, we're gonna find out this information?
Yes, and my getting authorization to work with Cal O E S so they can come and give us this presentation as well?
Okay, hold on, we'll get there, we'll get there. So you understand what you're doing, right? Can I get a motion?
I'd make a motion that we provide direction to staff to um, begin to arrange a meeting with Cal O E S for a site visit to the city of Rolling Hills to attend a future city council meeting and direct staff to begin coordinating with Cal O E S to apply for available grant programs and return to the council with updates.
And any required approvals.
And any what?
And any required approvals.
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much for coming, appreciate it, have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're just gonna go to matters of city council. This is a verbal update on the ADA project by me. Christian's been working with Nextdoor on the plans on how to redo this building. And then Dave called and said, we do not like you guys moving this wall out, so it's front across. Like the, the architectural committee got it and was like, we're not, we don't want this.
Which wall?
This front wall. We were talking about moving that thing all the way out to the front.
To allow more, more space.
More space and also would put another bathroom up here?
Right.
So they don't like what that's gonna do from a design of the uh, the building and how it's gonna look. So instead of them picking a fight with us, Dave did the right thing, he called us, we're gonna talk about it briefly. So my thing is, I totally get where they're coming from. I also understand we can run them over if we want to, but I don't think that's necessarily the right approach. Right? We can, so we can run them over if we want to. But the point is, they're not wrong. And what they're saying is that we just make this front, I mean, they don't let anybody's house look like this in the whole city or just a straight thing in glass. Um, I was hoping Jim was gonna be here cuz Jim doesn't wanna pay for any of it anyways. I don't know how much money we're talking about, but every time it just gets more expensive, more expensive, more expensive. And I'm not totally positive how we got to the designs we're at. The people who got us to those designs don't work here anymore. So, and I understand the benefits of getting, if I worked here, getting the bathroom added up front, so when people come in, they can use that bathroom instead of the now single use uh, gender neutral bathrooms, we're gonna have to build one's ADA and the other one's gonna be a smaller one. It's not, it's not optimal. But we're back to that same thing is, are we gonna do all this stuff? Cuz I'm one that believes like all this wire has to get better and all these sort of things. But I don't know which hill we're gonna die on and what we really need and what kind of money we really plan to spend for what this is, especially with all these other things going on that we're gonna need to eat up money on a whole bunch of other stuff. So that's what that is. I'm happy to participate with staff and I can help try to figure, huh, sorry, suicide. But uh, try to figure out how we can come up with something that's gonna be a little more. Christian and I talked about it briefly, like, there's a bathroom, there's a bathroom, and then for some reason, there's a conference room, and then there's a sink. That makes no sense from a building standpoint. Why wouldn't it have been the other way to try to make a little conference room? So that way it's not always meeting in Corina's office. I'm happy to help on this thing. I just don't want it to go off the rails again cuz we spent forever to get to here. My fear is, we're gonna get a budget and they're gonna tell us, like every remodel, that it's two million dollars to fix this thing. And then we're all gonna vote no. Cuz that's what we're gonna do.
Well, yeah, I know, we did spend a lot of time on that. And in the whole thing was just to, I mean, this space is pretty limited when we do have the overflow crowds. And I realize that's not every time that we have.
It's like planning for a hundred year storm.
Well, I mean. Just saying, but um, I just, um, I don't know.
So if you guys don't have a problem with it, um, I'm happy to talk to Christian and I guess Sam, I don't know who's involved in it, but we'll have a, a meeting about what's real and why and whatever to see if we can bring this thing back to some sort of sensibility. And, or come up with an idea that maybe works against Nextdoor, so it's not an against. Let's see if we, it, I think it's worth a little bit of time to figure that out, not paying architects, not whatever.
I just think, I mean, we, we didn't do this overnight. Where were they when we were talking about this?
Yeah, welcome to, welcome to building the rolling hills.
I don't know, I think we were just kind of following the rules. I mean, we, we set up the rule for building and safety that they, that they need to get um, the change of approval.
Yeah, we can make that happen, but that, like when you design a house in this city, or you design anything in the city, you design it, you spend a ton of money, you go through the whole process, you come over here and you get through here, and we change it and we change it, then you go next door and then they change it. It, it's just part of the process that's always been there.
Well, but we're, we're not, I mean, we're not a, a residence and we are the city that leases to them. I'm just saying that it doesn't have to be like a, a residence, just because they do that for residences, this is a, a public building.
All, all I'm saying is B is.
I can share, you know, so the, the architectural committee is made up of architects. Uh, many of them you've seen come before you at, you know, uh, either for a planning commission or, or if you've taken something under, you know, advisement. Uh, and the, the way they, their comments basically came to the fact that even though this is city property, it is outside of the gates, it is the quote unquote model house for what the aesthetic is behind the gate. And so to have the front facade just straight across without any articulation, if you will, uh, that it really did a disservice to the overall aesthetic that they tried to adhere to within the community. That, I mean, that, I'm, I'm really kind of scrunching it down there.
Wouldn't have approved this building when this building was built to begin with.
No, and, and the, the, the committee, the committee is really only focused on the exterior, right? And, and they actually started discussing our floor plan and they were not happy with our floor plan, but that's totally outside of their purview. So uh, wha- what, I, I think they were, they were all coming from a sincere place of care. Uh, Mr. Gunderson at one point, uh, even casually mentioned maybe helping out. You know, I don't know if that meant pro bono, and I, I did tell them that the council would probably be very appreciative if any of them wanted to, uh, to render their services for free.
Never be able to, we'd all have to recuse ourselves every time he came before us on a project.
Okay, so with all that said, yes, we can run them over, I totally, I understand, but I'm just saying is.
Run over sounds a little harsh, but you know.
We can, I, we don't, if we don't try to participate, it is a straight out run them over. There's no, well, we heard you, but we're gonna kinda, it is either we pick a war or we don't. My viewpoint, which is weird, is can we find a neutral zone here? And so if anyone doesn't have a problem with it, that was what my plan would be is to. You guys okay?
Well, but, but we did all this in council, now all this, it's gonna get done in closed doors and we're gonna get told this is what we, we get.
No, there's no closed door. No, no, I'm, we're gonna, I'm gonna talk with Christian and Sam and wherever, we're gonna talk about what it is, we're gonna look at what this is, and we're gonna discuss in a realistic realities of what we're gonna end up doing and see if we can make some sense out of this thing. Because what happened before was we got exhausted of this and Elaine just picked whatever Elaine wanted and picked the good parts. Your idea of moving that out was gonna add more space, good idea. Oh, we want to add a bathroom, good idea, whatever, all this stuff, she put it together how she wanted it. And then we never saw it again. And I went to the county and the county's like going through the process. Now they need the stamp from Nextdoor and there's no stamp. So here's the thing. I, I personally, when this thing comes back and it's gonna cost two million bucks, I'm gonna vote no. All right? We have to get an ADA compliant bathroom. So we have to figure this thing out, it's something sensible, we have no money, we're broke. We're the little teeny city.
And it isn't, it isn't behind closed, closed doors. If you were an app, if you were an applicant and you were building your house here, this is the process that you would go through. You could go in and talk to staff to be prepared so that when it comes before the architecture committee or it's been to the architecture committee and they've come back to you, that, I mean, you can meet with them one on one, that's like not behind closed doors, but that lets you know what to do going forward when you res- when you resubmit your plans, which then is heard in public. So it's just, it, it isn't behind closed doors, you're just getting advice from them or description or explanation of what they don't like about that, like the articulation of, you know, there's no articulation between the windows or something like that. So it isn't behind closed doors, I think it's the reasonable thing to do. It's what we would have to do if we were building, remodeling a house here. I don't think this is the thing we wanna pick, pick the fight on. But we realize all this money that we've spent going through all these different iterations of this, and now we're gonna go back, best case scenario is we're gonna go back to the base, the more basic plan and spend money again to get those plans back to the county and be approved, right?
And the, the question is, I don't know. So because we don't know yet, let us ha- have a convers- cuz what I didn't wanna do was, Christian called me and then Dave called me and we talked about it, I didn't wanna go try to do without telling you guys. So I'm saying is, let us try to figure out what the path that makes sense is. And maybe the path is what we have and we do this instead, or we push the wall. I mean, we could, we could move the wall out six feet and fix the problem. There's all sorts of things we could do, it's just money. So can we roll it back into something that's, that makes sense for what we need? That is reasonable, that's approvable, that we can pay for? Because you look at our reserves, it's not that great.
I understand, I'm just thinking if we're gonna be redoing everything essentially. I mean, and we're, and we're gonna have to get some extra rooms somewhere because this is a really tiny space for what we need. I mean, I mean, what about, you know, pushing out, I mean, this, this wall?
We had all kinds of issues with weight bearing walls, remember, things be, right now, it was, I, I would, I understand where, where you're coming from, but this, we've been doing this for like four, three or four years now.
I know, I've been there.
I would, I would like to make a motion that we authorize.
I'd like to open a public comment, anyone have a public comment?
You want?
Nope, all right.
Come on, hop in.
Jump in, tell us it. All right, then I close the public comment and then.
Well, I mean, I don't think it would be, I, I don't wanna just have something like you, you work something out and bring it back and this is just, this is what we agreed to with the association and.
Oh, I'm not talking to them. I'm gonna talk to them and then I'm gonna come back here.
Who's them?
Staff.
Oh, okay.
We're not going Nextdoor, I, I understand what the problem is. Christian understands what the problem is. It's super clear what the problem is. So we're gonna have a conversation about it, we're gonna see if there's options and then we'll bring it back to another meeting here.
Okay.
I'm so ready to just do the ADA bathroom at this point. I know we've spent a lot of money doing a lot of things and I'm, Jim has uh.
We have lowered counter and the doors, I mean, there's.
Well, there's a, there's a bunch of things, there's some minimum things that have to happen. And then it went, like every bad remodel goes. It went from, we're just gonna replace the carpet in the living room and somehow we bulldozed the thing. I mean, it'd be cheaper, it would honestly be cheaper to bulldoze this thing than to do what we're about to do.
An old house, I know, I live with that every day.
I'm going through it.
Motion.
Uh, I move that uh.
We bring it back for more information?
That uh.
Work with staff?
Yeah, that uh, the mayor works with staff to uh, come up with a revised plan for uh, ADA compliance.
Proposed, yeah. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is review council's expenditures for conferences above and beyond a thousand dollar limit per member as by the resolution and discussion potential approval or denial.
Good evening, mayor and council, uh, this item is just before you, uh, specific to conversations that you had back in August when you uh, updated the resolution and that is what is uh, before you right now. Uh, apologize that the one in the packet was um, was resolution thirteen seventy-three, which was actually your gift policy, not your, uh, so. Yeah, it was close by five. Yes. Uh, with, with that said, at any rate, um, some of the conversation that evening was specific to that if anyone is nearing their one thousand dollar limit as a member of the body, uh, that they either come to council to get permission for additional conferences and expenditures uh, ahead of time, or uh, that it comes back via staff, uh, you know, on matters from staff for council to approve the additional expenditures. So tonight we have uh, just expenditures that are over the thousand dollar limit. And it's really just a matter for you to discuss and decide whether you are allowing those or not. Available for any questions.
Okay. Anyone have any questions to start this thing?
Yes, I mean, more than, it's a, it's a question because my understanding is that when we, we've been doing this, is we had at the beginning, and I know I'm, I'm repeating myself, but just to get us back to, do it short. Um, in twenty thirteen, we had ten thousand dollars for all of the council members for conferences and, and meetings for organizations. Uh, and somebody was the, was a delegate representative. When twenty thirteen happened, I was a delegate representative for all of these different entities and doing all of them. And I was able to use the, the monies that were in the budget, which at that point was ten thousand dollars. And I would present it and, and so forth. So my understanding from our last conversation was that there was this one thousand dollars that didn't need to be put in for reimbursements, it could be spent for doing things and that weren't necessarily related to conferences. Uh, although I did put in for um, receipts and reimbursements. And that there's five thousand dollars as a whole for uh, conferences. And which is half of what it was before. So um, I understood and maybe there was a misunderstanding on my part, but that, that as we had been doing, you know, there was a, a motion by then Mayor Mersch to try to say, well, it's gonna only be a thousand dollars and there's no way um, that I could attend, you know, the basic conferences to bring back the information, which I feel is vital to our, our residents to know about what's going on, what education things, they bring back information so when issues come up, I already know about. I already know about the issue because I have been going to all of these conferences and meetings, learning, connecting with other council members to find out what they do in their city so that we're prepared. I think that's an important feature. I know five thousand dollars may seem like a lot of money, um, for us. But at the same time, if we miss an opportunity, or we don't have information to help us, uh, to guide us in a situation where we don't have a whole lot of time to negotiate, then that's going to be a lot more, uh, loss of money. So I think it's money well spent. All I'm asking is to be able to, um, be able to, um, and I try to be very judicious about the use, use of the money, only, and there's a lot of things I don't ask for reimbursement for. When I go and attend conferences, I've actually been, uh, sharing a room with a, another female council member to save costs so that we can each save costs for our city. But I do feel it's important to get information to bring back to the city so, to guide us so we know what's happening from Sacramento. So that's all I was, I wanted, obviously, you know, I think it's important, that's all.
Alright. I have opinions, but you want?
I don't think it's ever been a question about whether we've questioned whether you think it's important or not, or that there's not value to it. I don't think that's ever been the issue, at least from my perspective on that. It's an issue of money. It's an issue of making choices of which things that you feel are necessary or appropriate. I look at the agendas and I see some of the things that are just, that are covered in some of these things, and I find most of them not particularly valuable, at least, at least to me. That's just an individual thing. But we did agree, that you didn't support the vote, you voted differently on it, but we did have an agreement that this was the policy that we were going to have, that it was going to be a thousand dollars, and if you needed to spend more, that there would be this approval process and you should ask for it in advance before you go off and spend it. Because it isn't just that the money is sitting there, and if nobody else is using it, then it's okay for you to use it. If it's not being used here, it could be used someplace else. It doesn't have to go to this use. And that's why I think that asking if you go over the thousand dollars, we all agree, we're not agree, but we, the majority agrees that, yes, we're gonna do that instead of, because I might already be thinking about, gee, I could use that money, I, the city, someplace else. And so if you're gonna go over the thousand dollars, the reason that I supported this the last time when we've talked about it is because the money could be used elsewhere. We're, we're gonna be hemorrhaging money right now, and I just, it, but again, I didn't want you to ever think it was about that your intentions aren't good and that you don't think it's valuable and, you know, that, that has, that has nothing to do with it. To me, it's just about a matter of money, and it's a matter of, we've gone over it and over it, and we revised the policy again last time even though you didn't vote for it. This is what the majority agreed to, and I think we just go ahead and follow the process. It shouldn't be that difficult.
Hang on. Is, so here's my viewpoint is, let's do this. Is there any way B for you to put together a budget of what you think is necessary to do this for the whole year, or whatever that is? Cause right now, like, it's, one, I don't think you should be spending your money and then have to, you shouldn't be spending the money then coming in here and then wondering if we're gonna give you the money back. That's not okay, alright? So to me, we gotta know ahead of time that says, hey, coming up are these six meetings and this one conference, and I think it's gonna cost this much money, here's the agendas, and maybe we gotta do this, I don't really wanna fight about it every single meeting, but maybe we gotta be like, hey, this next, we know, cause they have to know a couple of months ahead of time, not always what exactly the agendas are, but if we can get ahead of this thing and say, yeah, that one makes sense, this one makes sense, that one doesn't make sense to us, and we discuss the ones that don't make sense, and we kinda do that thing. To me, that's how we should be doing this, instead of, I'm looking at this going, okay, well, we have to get your hundred and two dollars back, that's, I mean, a thousand and two dollars back, that's, that's not okay. So, can we figure out, could you, and maybe you and Karina figure out, or you, I don't know who knows the most about what these things are out there, cause it's not me, cause I have no intention of going to these things. Is, could we find out what those things are, what we think the budget is, and try to put together a budget that says, each one of these Cal City ones costs us about this much. This costs about that much. Hey, uh, there's three of them that are far away and that's gonna cost about this much, and then we have at least an idea of what this is, cause honestly, we've been arguing about that ten thousand dollars because it's just a made-up number. Then we made it five, which is a made-up number, then we said everyone gets their own, which is a made-up number. So, if we treat this like everything else that wouldn't be here, put together what you think it's gonna be, or here's what I think's gonna happen, as best you can. You've done this now for a long time. So look backwards and say, hey, I think there's seven meetings, there's this and this. I think in general, this is what it's gonna cost, and then let's talk about it that way. And then, it's gonna be more money than we wanna spend, cause it always is. Then we're gonna say is, let's get the agendas and say, hey, this is what we're looking at. Cause if you come back to, in my mind, if you come back and say, yeah, I think the whole year's gonna cost twenty-five-hundred bucks, I'd be like this, fine, I'm done talking about it, alright? But you're not. You're gonna come back and say, hey, the whole year, it's gonna cost whatever, ten grand, or twelve grand, or fifteen, or twenty, right? I don't know what it is.
No, I think, I think the, the whole year will be at the five thousand mark.
So, could, so do this, is put together a, the simplest, I'm not saying complicated.
Right.
Just be like, hey, in general, I've done this a bunch, and usually when I do this thing, when, uh, this costs about twenty-five bucks here, this costs whatever, just put together kind of a, a line item thing that just says, if I do everything I would love to do this year, it's gonna be about this much. So we at least have an idea of what the number we're fighting over, that's one. And then two, we need to find out is, how do we get the agendas ahead of time to see if they're actually valuable? Cause I don't like you spending your own money, and I don't like you spending your time if it's not gonna bring us value.
Well, I mean, some of them don't, like Contract Cities, the agenda comes out, I mean, by that time you have to be really reserving the hotel cause it fills up. They don't, they, they somehow don't finalize it till later.
Let's, let's put together somewhat, cause between now and January, there's, there's, there's nothing you're gonna be going to, right?
I mean, there's nothing unless I go to, which I was gonna explain to you. We, I went for the first time to the Contract Cities Legislative Session that they do, and it was actually pretty informative. They had legislators come in and say, this is what I wanna try to do, so you kind of figure out, oh, that's, that's their area, and you meet them, and then you talk about the issues that we want as cities, we need to get going. But, but if you don't think that's important for, um, to get a heads up as to what their legislative agenda is, what Contract Cities will do collectively, and, and partner with them.
See, my problem is, I don't think there's much we can do to stop them. So that's my problem.
And the one time, I, I did go up for, for the Contract Cities legislating, and it was, other than, it was interesting to see how things were run up there. I didn't find the Contract Cities organization, they give you the script they want you to say when you meet with those people, right? And, and, and they were, and they were not the things that we were care- I went up there to talk about the housing. It, it was totally different, it was, I wouldn't call it a waste of time because I, I learned, but I learned some bad things. I learned how ineffective it was, I learned there was nothing that, in my opinion, that could be done. I didn't find it valuable. So, that's something, that, that's just a different perception. You found that valuable. It's interesting, but it didn't, I don't think anything that I did, spending the three days up there, helped my city at all.
So we're, we're talking about the value, the perceived value of these conferences, and we're, seems like we're getting off the track of what the agenda item is, which is to establish, you know, the payment or the non-payment, or as you proposed, a budget. I mean, we can, we could discuss the value of these things a lot, and there, it's subjective. Each person may have a different, does have a different perspective on it, but I would like to stop bringing this back to council meetings and just, you know, decide, make the decision, um, stay with that decision, and, you know, if there's not enough money for you to do all the different things, there's just not enough money. That's, that's, to me, that's what we're talking about right now, it's just establishing the amount that we're going to approve or authorize, under what conditions. And then that's the pot of money, that's, that's all you get to, to choose from. And, you know, if you wanna go to another conference and it's outside that budget, you'll have to spend it on your own. That's a decision you would have to make, of course, but-
Well, and the reality is, basically, we've or- there's already two thousand dollars worth of money on here. So, we've already-
It goes through, through June, right? We're talking about the, uh-
It goes through June.
June till, basically-
Till the next-
Last month.
But, but I wanna say-
July to end of June.
No, I understand, it goes for the whole year, but we've or- she's already spent almost two thousand dollars to get to here over the last-
That's the thing, there's, there's six more months, seven more months to go.
Yeah, and at that place, she's gonna spend magically five thousand dollars, which is what she just said, so-
Well, we haven't, as a council, we haven't authorized that though.
I know, but she, so here's where we're at. She spent the money anyways.
Okay, I've, in, in truth, I, I've, like, I've read, I, there was a motion by Mayor Mersch to say it's gonna be a thousand, and anything over a thousand has to come back to council. And then I met, started talking and, and said, well, look, this is-
No, I, I hear what you're saying, but in, but in my mind is, we should be hearing about it before you spent the money.
And I, well, first of all, this came out where they, they put out a, a, where we are today for the first time for this, this meeting.
Okay.
Do you not know how much you're spending?
Well, I mean, when I'm, the two conferences came back-to-back, the JPIA and the, and the meet.
But this shouldn't, this shouldn't be news to you.
Well, I see when I get the initial notice how much they're charging for the conference and so forth, but I'm not making a tally, but you're right, I could, I could have done that, I could have tried to put that together into some kind of spreadsheet, which is what I was trying to get away from, cause it was taking a lot of time. But I thought that's, this would be just a running tally. My understanding was that after the one thousand, then we would go into the amount of money for the conferences, and I was, I was misunderstanding the conversation. I understood that we, we had this amount of money, and, and I, I remembered that you were trying to say we were only limited to a thousand, and then, um, uh, Count, Mayor Protem at that time, he's mayor now, um, Piper said, well, you know, we have this money here and, and you, this is the way we've been doing it.
And we've, we've done this before.
I know, but I'm just saying, that's why I got this impression.
Okay, hold on a second. Open a public comment, is there any public comment? None, thank you, close the public comment. Okay, so here's, here's my take on this, alright? One, I think B gets her two thou- one thousand and two dollars, and take it out of mine, okay? I don't care where it comes from, it needs to get over. Next, is you have to put together a budget that you think is what it's gonna take to do the whole year. Then, we're gonna see what that budget is, which is magically gonna be some dollar amount, which is magically gonna be five thousand dollars. And then, we're gonna have to have a meeting that says, okay, B thinks she's gonna spend five thousand dollars to do certain things. Because one of the things is, B's on the California Contract City, so if she's gonna go to the league and the this and the that, parking, gas, whatever that is, those are expenses that are legit. Either we are going, or we're not going. So, then these other ones that we have to travel for, which co- which is a bigger bulk of the dollars, we just gotta decide if we're gonna do these things, or we say, we don't do any of those things because it's gonna be too expensive, except for you say, oh, on this one special, they're talking about landslide movement, I wanna go. Then we say, okay, we're gonna allocate what that is. But right now, I've never seen this before, you've never seen it before, I mean, this is new, this is helpful. But I would say is, let's get a budget, and what do you think, but line item it out. I think in January and February, there's two meetings each, and those cost about this much, and whatever these things are. Because the other thing we can talk about is not going to this stuff, or what we think it is. So, I know I'm not supposed to, but I'm making a motion that we pay B the one thousand and two dollars she's currently owed, and I'm, and we're not gonna pay her anymore after that without a budget ahead of time that we approve.
Excluding, like, meetings that, that are, there's regular meetings for the league, every other month, fifty dollars.
Put together a budget and do that. Because we can't keep, because if it's gonna be fifty bucks a month, then-
It's every other month.
Okay, so by definition alone, that's, that's three hundred dollars, okay? Great, then, do we wanna go to league or don't we? The league costs us three hundred dollars to go. Is that worthwhile, yes or no? Okay, we think it is, we move forward. So put together a budget that we can then agree that we're gonna do these things or not, and kinda just do it by the month and say, hey, we, I, there's a league here and there's a this thing here, and then there's usually a conference that costs a thousand bucks in here. And then we'll put it on the agenda, and then we'll vote on it ahead of time so you're not out money out of your pocket, cause that's, that's not okay.
Just, just to clarify, is the thousand and two dollars, is that what? It's either that or the eight hundred and thirty-two, I'm, I'm looking-
No, no, you, you look at the total here. The, the line that the city's already paid out was nine hundred and five dollars, okay? Then the next line hit, which was money that B has asked for or being reimbursed from, which is the thousand and two. So you add those two up, the total of that has been spent so far is one thousand nine hundred and seven dollars.
Let's say eight hundred and thirty-two dollars in the staff report then. Eight thirty-two.
Oh, that says Councilmember Derringer will be eight hundred and thirty-two out, over her allocated amount of one thousand dollars. If, if you approve the one thousand.
Oh, cause one of those lines in there is Leah for seventy-five bucks.
And I have gone to other things that I have not submitted for. I don't submit when I go to mayor's meetings, I don't submit for a- a- anything, and, and-
And I don't submit like mileage, but good, I go to all these meetings.
So, so, hang, hang on. Is, so my motion is, we're gonna give her the hundred and two dollars, or one thousand and two dollars, and no more money until you come with a budget, and then we're gonna discuss line items. Line item.
Are we gonna be able to set that up for a meeting?
Well, uh, my, my question would be, do we need to bring that back on December tenth? Because, uh, Councilmember Derringer mentioned the Contract Cities Legislative Event, which is in January, I believe.
Where?
In Sacramento.
I mean, I don't have to go to that, I mean, I could do some one-
Okay, so let's not go to that, and then let's get a budget and figure out what we're gonna do, and then let's do that. I mean, you can't keep doing it the way we're doing it, it doesn't work, so we have to have-
I think there's a, a league meeting early January, which is fifty dollars to go to the, the league meeting.
I'm out of money, I just gave you my thousand.
Oh, there's, well, December, there's all cities meeting, that we're Contract Cities and, and the league, and it's, it's in December. So I mean, um, I get the, it's the date.
And, and so Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, the, you guys did attempt to broach this topic when we adopted this, this, this resolution, and basically did say that any expense in excess of one thousand then must require approval by the city council, so I understand your motion. I believe that that is, would be good direction for any council member to take, but I will advise that if someone does go above that and nevertheless seeks it, staff would likely put it on the agenda regardless, or excuse me, irregardless of what, of what any motion is here tonight.
No, I, I get that.
It's on December eleventh?
He's saying is, if she wants to go anyways and pay the fifty bucks, and then she puts it on the piece of paper, then the piece of paper will come back and say, you have to approve the fifty dollars, cause she went to a thing in December.
I guess that's, that's what the resolution says, that that was the document.
That, that's what happened here, wherever, I lost it already, but that piece of paper. So what I'm saying is, take my thousand and two dollars, I got two dollars in my wallet, which I didn't bring.
But, I, at this point, this is gonna come back to city council.
Yes, with a budget. It's gonna come back with a budget, and what we're gonna say is, the travel ones are out, and the non-travel ones are great.
The whole purpose of this thing was so that we didn't have to keep doing this. I thought that if everybody had a budgeted amount, they stay within the budget amount. I'm surprised that you were surprised about how much money you've spent so far. I'm surprised that you were surprised about how much money you've spent so far, but that, you know, that's, that's neither here nor there. But if, if you're going to go over it, this was the process that we said that, that's what the resolution said, that you have to come back and get preapproval before you, before you expand the funds.
And that was your motion, which did not actually go. And, and so the direction of this discussion, to me, because I, I took notes, I listened to the tape, was that, well, you know, we're, I, I don't, and then you withdrew the motion because it didn't appear that either Jim or Jeff were, were supporting that. They go, yeah, let's just do it the way we have been doing it. That's what I thought it was. So I didn't purposely go over-
Okay, hold on, hold on. We're, we're already here. So what we're going to do here is, on the December 10th, you're going to come back with anything you think you're spending in December and in January. Those will, and ideally, the entire year, because we should be able to figure that out. And, because if it's 50 bucks to go to the thing, or we stop going to these leagues and we stop paying money to these guys. If we're going to pay money to whatever the cog and the sog and the who's its and the what's it, then someone should go.
And all I'm asking is that because the December 11th, Contract City, Joint Contract Cities and League, uh, meeting on December 11th, which is my birthday, but I'm going, that, because that's the day before you're asking for the meeting, if we can just approve that, um, event, and-
And how much do you think that is?
That's going to probably give you $75.
Approve the friggin' $75.
Okay, here we go. All right, I'm, I'm amending my motion. Could you, I'd like to pay B her $1,002. I'd like to approve a maximum of $75 to be sent in, spent in December. And, and after that, there's no more money being spent without a budget showing what's going forward, so we can figure this out.
And if I'm understanding council correctly, even if she builds a budget of what it's going to be, it would still have to come back each time it goes over, when it goes over.
Correct. Now, so, so, if, if you guys approve it, whole thing, and if she's, if she's within that, good to go. The second anyone goes above that, we then come back.
Let's see, second it?
All seconds.
All favor?
Aye.
All right. Problem solved.
Yeah.
I have one more matters from staff thing that's just verbal real quick.
And me too.
Okay, go first.
Sure. So, um, I know it's been some time since we've heard from Southern California Edison on the recent, um, de-energization of properties in the Flying Triangle, Centring Road, and Quell Ridge, and at one point Spur Lane. Since the shut offs, we've had 12 properties on the list to be restored. Of the 12, eight have been restored.
Is that power?
Restored power. Restored power. Um, I don't know all the properties, so I just don't have that information. But, um, since then, staff has been meeting with SoCal Edison, just to kind of get updates on any potential or future restorations. And we provide them information on individuals who currently have solar panels, um, and they're monitoring who has a final inspection. So that way, if in the future, there is an additional group of properties that are going to get restored, they've been finalized into the approval process and are permitted, and it'll be a quicker transition. On November 19th, we held a staff meeting with Southern California Edison. The then mayor, now councilwoman Mersch, attended that meeting with staff, and the community association was present. Now, the purpose of this meeting was to really just check in with a greater group of individuals and talk about the engineering and mitigations that Southern California Edison was exploring. Um, in discussions, they didn't commit to any more future ones at this time, but they are looking at, um, they're considering rerouting as one of the alternatives to potentially restore power. They're looking at, um, placing, you know, switching and isolation devices on electrical poles, so that, for example, the commu, the residents, the 12 that were on spur and some on centring, um, those properties were restored because they looked at their data, and based on the data, what they, what they call situational awareness, um, they were able to reroute circuits and/or place switching and isolation devices that allows these 12 properties to be restored. I do want to add that they are looking at all, all other alternative options. It's nothing that they have said in concrete as, at this time, but they're are, um, looking at rebuilding and modifying their current infrastructure. One of them could be potentially increasing the height of poles, um, considering the type of poles, how much of these wires will be, um, I guess, what, I can't remember the, the correct term, but, um, how much the, the pole and the, the wires kind of are-
Slack.
What is it?
Slack.
Slack, thank you. Couldn't think of the word slack. This is something that they're also exploring. Nothing at this time has been said as if it's going to be implemented in our city, but they are making efforts on potentially restoring more power. No commitment as to when, but they're going to continue to have these dialogues with, um, city staff. Um, I know Councilwoman Mersch was there, and she wants to opine or provide any additional information, but we did request that they come back to city council and the residents to provide an update. I think it's important to be able to, outside of my brief, um, update, for them to share with the community what they're doing, and what they've done, and what they're looking at. Um, and they're continuing to provide, um, individuals to come out and do light our screens, look at the measurement of movement, if any exists, and how they can potentially restore more power. And that concludes our presentation, but I will allow Councilwoman Derringer, she wa, I mean, Mersch, does she like to say anything else?
I, I would like to add that I think it's important that the community understands that when this first started happening, that we kind of felt, you know, this, um, indefinite, you know, the term indefinite kind of made us feel like we were being abandoned, and that they really didn't care about us. I don't know how much they care about us, but I, they are working on, on things. And I, I think that there is a possibility that as soon as they got the segmentations where they could do the first, where they did spur and some of the houses up on, um, centring, I think that they're continuing to look at doing more segments. Now, that doesn't help the people that have already converted to solar, but what it does do is it puts the community back. If you can ultimately get power, to me, it's been really important that we be able to get power available, whether people want to go back on the grid or not, that's up to them. But from a city standpoint, I think it's important that we don't have parts of our city that don't have electricity, that are not on the grid. I just don't think you have an upscale affluent city and have that situation. Realize, you know, the harm's already been done and so on and so forth, but there, I, I don't think they've been, they have abandoned us yet. I would like to request, I was, got involved with this while I was the mayor, but I, if it's all right with the rest of the council, I would like to continue. Most of these meetings take place during the day, and, you know, I, my schedule is a little bit more flexible sometimes during the day, and some people, I've been pretty involved with this. I would like to be able to continue sitting in on, on those calls and so forth. It's something near and dear to my heart, and my intention is to get service restored in the, in the whole community, if I can. And I would like to continue to work towards that.
Sounds great.
That's fine.
You're okay with that?
And tomorrow, we'll provide this update, um, on our website, so they know that we are continuing to work with them. And then we'll place it on the blue newsletter, just to kind of provide a brief update.
Yeah, and without any, because you're not going to get Edison to commit to any time for lines. They're not going to tell you that, you know, we're going to do this, or we're going to do that, or, you know, anything like that. But just to let them know that we are continuing to be en, engaged with them, and having them look at it. Some of the things they're looking at could be a matter of several months. Some of them could be, some, some of the longer term fixes could take longer than that, but.
Could I ask a question? You mentioned that you asked Edison if they'd come back to the council and tell the council and the community what's going on. Did they say yes or no?
They would like to, once they have more of a definitive-
They want to show up to be saying, look, we're doing this, not, let's just yell at them some more. I mean-
Because until they know what, until they know what's practical for them to do, and what's safe for them to do, what they can engineer to do, it, it's just a-
Yeah.
It's just a, you know, it's just a, we're working on it. So what I'm suggesting that we do is that we tell them, we tell our residents that we are continuing to work, to work with them and have the dialogue. I don't think you're going to get them to come and, at this stage, to tell you any, anything. I don't know that, I don't know that there would be any bout, I don't know that there would be any value to it.
But once they have something, they did say, once they're able to present concrete information, they will-
And if a couple of months go by, the, and they, they're not ready to give us a, a little bit more information, I think we would say, hey, then you need to come in. But this was the first time of all the meetings that we had, that it, that, that there seemed to be some forward movement, the, you know, a possibility, a little light shining there. So if we have more meetings, if, if the light doesn't continue to get brighter, then I think we pull them back. But if there's, the light is, is going, I, I think that we give them some time to work on something, and if they can come up with another, let's say they can do another segment, if they can segment, you know, six or seven more houses, or 10 more houses, however many they can do with redesigning that circuit, that, that will show that they're continuing to work on it. And I'm sure they would be delighted to come in when, and talk about it when they can do something.
Well, call me a skeptic. But, um, Karina, what, what reason did Edison give when they restored power to the, what, to the, the number of homes that they-
Eight, right?
Cancelled? Okay, whatever it was. But why were they able to re-energize those homes?
Sure, I, we actually did, did ask that question. And what they determined was, they ended up making or placing what is called a switching and isolation devices on the poles.
Oh, I can't do that for the rest of the poles. I thought it was, I thought it was based on land movements, that the land movement had slowed down considerably, therefore now it was safe.
Yeah, so, not in this particular case, but they are looking at that land movement as being one of them, but they're trying to utilize what they consider situational awareness, is that because of situation off of Spur Lane and the upper part of centring, they were able to apply these devices and then restore the power of those segments. They are looking at, in the future, to potentially restore more, but they're looking at all those factors.
So what they had to do, Pat, basically is segment, sh, segment the part that, there was no land, there was no land movement on the spur and those portion, and that, that top portion of centring, and the poles, this, um, but serving them, serving those areas, since there was no land movement, they, they shut up, they put a, like a blockage between us and the rest of the properties below. As they can determine that there isn't land movement at the next segment and the next segment, and it may not necessarily be this way, it could be a segment from down below, might not be having any. But they have to segment it off from the rest of the circuit that is de-energized, right? Karina, is that like, that's like what they're saying? And it, they're, they still have to be able to design a way to get power to those places. And if there is land movement, it is more difficult to get power to someplace where there is land movement, as opposed to where there, there wasn't. So, like, I, I don't think you're, you're a skeptic. I, I, believe me, I understand.
Open? All right. So, all right, that's into that?
Yeah, and then my announcement, uh, is, uh, all council members, all planning commissioners, city attorney, city manager, finance director, you've all gotten emails from the FPPC in the past week. Uh, so, and I'll just summarize briefly, but the FPPC is now requiring, some of you are already doing this, uh, but they are requiring that going forth, everybody must utilize their online portal for filling out your Form 700s, uh, going forward. So there's going to be another round of emails coming in, uh, in the next few weeks. And, uh, and then, of course, once we hit January, it'll be time to, uh, start filling out your forms for next year. So, uh, we'll work collaboratively through this process. Anything I can do to help, please let me know. But everybody be aware that, that this is now a requirement. That includes you, city attorney. Uh, so.
Do we know when the Form 700s do?
Form 700s, your next round is due, it's probably, it's usually like April 1st. So, um, so, but once, once you're past January is when you're able to fill out that form for the next year.
We're good, we're good.
Can I ask, um, quickly, matters from the council, I missed my opportunity.
No, you didn't. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I would like to ask staff to look into this matter, and that is generator usage within the community. And I don't want to spend 10 hours on this project, but I would like to, uh, see if other communities that are impacted by generator usage, and it may not be a city, it may, may be, I don't know, a campsite, for example. Um, there's a lot of generator noise pollution going on, and air pollution, as a matter of fact, in the de-energized neighborhood. And, I mean, I have a generator, and as a matter of fact, I just moved it from one house to another today. Um, I'm using it on a very limited basis now, uh, but there are people that have generators that are running, if not 24/7, 18, uh, out of 24 hours, well into the night, and they're loud, really loud and obnoxious. And, you know, it's been, what, three months now since we lost power? I've been, it's not just me. This isn't coming from me. This is from residents in the neighborhood that have come to me and said, what about this? Now, I don't think we have any kind of a noise ordinance in the city, uh, especially one that specifically addresses generators. But there comes a point where you just have an expectation, when you go outside, you can talk to your family members without having to yell. So I would like to, uh, look into a policy or policies that, that may exist. I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but somebody has experienced this problem before and has dealt with it.
Good, good, good. All right, so we're going to- Okay, so that's, uh, we're moving on to closed session, which means, you guys need paperwork signed? What do you guys need? What, you, you did, oh, you-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to introduce you as a, as a senior in high school. Have the mayor sign it. Very good.
The mayor did it.
Yeah, sign it as the mayor, too.
They're not all like this. When you, if you go to other city councils, they're not all like this.
And then, so Christian will recess to closed session at 9:08.
Melissa.
It looks like we're, are we live?
Yes, we are.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll give my closed session report. City Council recessed into closed session at 9:08 PM pursuant to the three items listed on the agenda. The city reconvened into open session at 10:08 PM and no reportable action was taken. That concludes my report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
To adjourn the meeting.
Until...
Until...
December 10th.
No.
11th.
No, 11th of August in Vegas. It's 10th. Is there, but we had to do a thing before that.
Oh, yeah. The ninth, the ninth is the party. Yeah.
So we adjourned to the 10th?
To the party. Yeah, the 10th. The party is not a...